We proved the minutes of May 11.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Are there any requests for changes or modifications?
I'd like to abstain.
And is abstaining. There being no requests for modification, Ali would entertain a motion.
Made by Rich.
I made it. Yep, made it and seconded, somebody seconded it.
Mike Lee Roy.
Motion made by Rich and seconded by Michael Roy, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is a little hard because I can only see four people at a time. Can we identify everybody who's saying aye?
Aye.
Rich. Mike.
Brad.
And Joe. Okay. The next item on the agenda is an application by Craig Nichols. And this is for the property known as Green Lakes Lanes. Property is located at 7930 East Genesee Street, Baguio. And this is the first presentation of the amended site plan. More particularly, they're seeking to add an ice cream window to the property at 7930 East Genesee. Is there somebody here on behalf of the applicant?
That would be us. I'm Craig Nichols and this is my partner, Brian Holtz.
Thank you, Craig. Can you just tell us all a little bit about what you're doing and why you're trying to do it?
Yes, so we would like to start offering ice cream to our customers and also to start serving ice cream through a window through the exterior of the building to walk up customers. We think it would be a great addition to kind of the overall experience that we're trying to build here. But also bowling is a seasonal business that is very light in the summer months. And so the purpose of the ice cream from a business perspective is to help us to kind of fill in the summer months and keep things going here.
The site plan, if I could ask a question, the site plan you gave us, is that based on a survey?
Yes, that's, yeah, that was actually a survey.
It is based on a survey?
Correct, yes.
Okay, because one of the items Doug mentioned, I thought it was a good one, is it is pretty close to Route 5 and it might be in the right-of-way. But if this survey is accurate, it is not. Is that correct?
That's right.
Ellison, might you be able to pull up the survey?
Actually, we asked for the survey, they didn't have one, so we actually had to go actually get one. Wish you didn't have one on file from Randy, Randy said he didn't have one on file.
Doug, are you comfortable with that? I mean, are you, I know that was one of the items you had in your letter to us today.
I mean, it looks like a survey, but it's not stamped as a licensed survey.
And I know, I took a ride over there and I saw the stones that you had put in place. And it looks pretty accurate what you have on the site plan. So I get an understanding, my only concern is what Doug raised, and that is if it's in the actual right-of-way.
Well, so the drawing is based off of a certificate, is my understanding. What information would you need for clarification?
You just need the surveyor who did the work to just confirm where the right-of-way is and that you're not encroaching the right-of-way.
Right, yep.
That's all.
Mr. Nichols, this is Joe Lupia. I've got a question for you, from looking at the survey at the drawing. It looks like you can almost enter Genesee Street from a wide variety of areas. That there's no one particular or two particular entrances or exits. Am I wrong?
No.
You're correct.
No, you're right, Joe, it's wide open, that whole front entranceway. There's no curbing.
And I'm just asking that question from a safety viewpoint. If we have multiple entrances and exits, what's going to control the traffic so that we don't have exits?
I would say that this is the configuration of the parking lot from before we took over in November. The only thing that is different here is we're just taking a little bit of parking away. To that extent, I would think that that might actually limit what was otherwise, and more access points.
Right, now, the reason why we put those stones up and blocked it in was to protect anybody that was in line in case somebody come off that highway or anything like that, because just being new, I wanted to make sure there's something there to protect people and stand in line.
Joe, I think the problem in what you're asking, and I understand it, is because all those parking spaces they have in front of the building, there is no driveline. So to create a curb cut would be quite difficult because you can't get to it. Now, whether or not that's right or wrong, I can't tell you, but that's the reality of the location.
Yeah, the curb cuts are because of the county road and going up there, it would just be costly by the time we go through all that.
Okay.
Isn't there a survey available? I would think, when was this purchased? When was this property purchased?
November.
Well, you must give a survey from that.
That is correct, and this, the drawing that we see here is based on that survey, right?
But we still need the survey. The survey itself.
That's right.
Right, did you have a survey?
I've got a question for Lisa, the planning board secretary. Did we, we made the referral to county?
Yes.
Have we heard back yet?
Uh, no, their meeting is Wednesday.
So if they have a problem with the county exits for the roadway, they'll let us know then.
I should know Wednesday afternoon, yep.
Genesee Street is a state road. Right. And the other thing is both parking in the back and in the front is not striped. So it really doesn't show on the property.
Is all the parking in the back on the lower level?
Actually, they parked up front, and I didn't encourage it when I first got here, they were parking all over the place, it's double-sided. And this is the way they've been doing it for years and years and years. I'm trying to market so it's only one-sided and most of the stuff can go downstairs. And there's a lot more parking than what you see down, what we just got blocked off, we were just taking the square footages. And there's a lot more parking than that downstairs.
But it's on another level, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to come for ice cream and go up the hill all the way up there.
Well, it's more bowling, and then on the left side of the building, we just pretty much just cleaned it all up, got all the trees out of there, the trees that were dangling, dying on us, so we got rid of all that. And we, you know, graded it so it's nice. I think that there's, parking is not going to be the issue to us or anybody on the road. I mean, since I've been coming here since November, I'm here for 12 hours a day, seven days a week. They had any, but no issues with people going in and out of this building.
Is there, is there a plan to actually pave and stripe both upper and lower levels? Is that part of the plan?
If I can make some money on some ice cream, I can get some money coming in. I mean, we're starving here. We've been, I've been shut down for a few years. With no cash flows coming in. And still rebuilding the inside, making it beautiful.
The facade looks great, you did a nice job with that.
Well.
I think the concern for this board is going to be that the DOT, New York State, it's a state roadway, is going to weigh in on this situation. And I am very skeptical as to whether they're going to approve anything that would continue allowing that open access to that parking. So once you do something like that, then DOT will be like, okay, you can do this, but you have to close the roadways. Close the curb cuts. So I would be very concerned about that. And also, this board needs to, it's a pre-existing condition, but whether now this would be a situation that would exacerbate it, that's for this board to figure out as well. But I think it might ultimately be in the hands of the DOT. I've never known them to allow this kind of a curb cut to continue where there's an improvement like this.
Oh, the improvement, and what do you mean by improvement?
Well, the use, that you're going to do something different, you're going to change the use, you're going to have service there. So now they're going, that opens it up to the whole, the whole site and the whole access. They're going to look at it all. I'm not saying that to, you know, to be negative on it, I'm just saying realistically, in my experience.
Somebody to put a curb cut in here, I think it just shuts this deal all down. Because I don't think, if I don't serve anything out of the front window, especially if COVID comes back in the fall, I'm going to be in trouble.
No, I'm not, I am not commenting on this because I'm just the counsel, I'm the attorney. So I'm just trying, I'm just trying to put forth what I think is going to happen. And it's probably not going to be in the hands of this board, it's going to be in the hands of the DOT.
I think you're 100% correct, Jamie.
And that's my concern as well.
I was all about the ice cream, I think it's a great idea, but it is a concern.
So my question is, did we send a notice to the state? Are we waiting, are we not awaiting a letter from them, are we?
I believe that what usually happens is that the county is going to come back with the recommendation that the state needs to be, DOT needs to be contacted about this. So it, of course, this is the first time we've seen this project here at this board. But I would be absolutely shocked if the county recommendation didn't come back and say that. And then, once you contact them, that it's not going to be a great result.
No, I think you're right. I think that's, and it may change the parking layout in the front of the building, it may change a number of things, we don't know.
Yeah, but I can't afford to go repave it and re-curb cut it, so.
I mean, that may be a fact, but it's going to be out of our hands, it's a state decision.
So suppose for a moment that we we were to remove the stone and remove the grade up to the ice cream window and restore the original configuration of the parking over there. Is, so what I have in my mind is, you know, the potential to try to avoid having to, you know, incur this cost and make this change for the curb cut. If there was a way to kind of resume the original configuration, and if we developed an alternative solution for the ice cream. Maybe just serving inside as opposed to trying to serve through the window for now, until we can figure out something else.
Is there an entry there, right, a door entry right there down on the bottom?
No.
No. Just the window. The door is actually at the end of the stone, if you look at that thing, it's at the end of the stone, you see where the blocked out, where the parking used to be. I blocked it all off, so on the right of those stones, the doorway going into the building, and to the left, inside the building, there's a window I put in inside the building. On the outside of the building, to the farthest left, you're going to see a row of stones, on the right, row of stones on the left, and right in the middle, there is a ice cream, that's the ice cream window that we put in.
So down at that bottom level where the parking is, question, so there is not a door there now at all, anywhere?
Yeah, there is a door.
Yeah, there's a door, a door right there. Yeah, you'll see a little overhang right there. That's, the overhang is actually the way into the downstairs, and it goes upstairs into the bowling alley.
So I think if there were, if this is a pre-existing condition and you didn't add the window, which becomes, you know, a really kind of a change of use, but you served the ice cream inside and people had to walk in, I'm not sure that we would have anything to say about this. Because there would be no changes.
That's my thought as well, Jamie.
That's, that's.
Might not be the loveliest, and it would seem like, wow, you'd rather make it look a lot better. But if it doesn't involve site plan issues, then it wouldn't, you know, it just would probably be a permit over with codes.
No.
I agree, Jamie, I think you're absolutely right.
If the DOT comes back and they make a fuss over this, is that, would that still be an option at that point? Take all that out, just serve on the inside and not? Or is it, once it's raised with them, then, you know, all bets are off for that type of situation?
You've got the whole front of that building right there, that, you know, all along that parking lot and everything else, which is, you know, Green Lakes comes over, puts their sign up in that area to show that there is no parking up to Green Lakes and stuff like that.
You know, I, not to interrupt, but that really shouldn't be an answer that the town or the town attorney gives you. That should be your attorney that's giving you some guidance in that area.
Fair enough. All right. But if they open me up this weekend for outdoor seating, can I go out there and put some seats out front? So I can serve something?
You know, that's, that's an interesting question because the county executive has in fact put out an order that says any permits that are required for outdoor seating to be implemented anywhere are, they're overridden, right? So town has no say in that. And this might be news to this board, if you hadn't seen that executive order.
I got to put a big X on my window and tell somebody, everybody else to come inside, love you, we missed you, come on in and we'll give you some ice cream.
I, again, if you have, if you have counsel or someone who would like to discuss those issues offline with me, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll have to get counsel on it, and then figure out what we can do with the state. You're still waiting for a letter, and you said you're bringing it up tomorrow, that's going to be the county coming up tomorrow, right?
We'll get the county response on Wednesday.
But within that response is likely to be what we have been discussing here.
Correct.
How long does it take the state to get back to something? Don't laugh at me.
Well, you can jump the gun, and you could contact the Department of Transportation yourself and get the inquiry going quicker if you'd like to do that.
I really think they need guidance from their own attorney, Joe. I think we should probably stay out of giving any guidance along those lines.
Okay.
Well, I'm clueless, how am I going to go anywhere if you don't give me any guidance?
The guidance is that you probably ought to talk to your attorney and have him explain to you what needs to be done or what shouldn't be done.
Thanks for hurting my feelings.
Gentlemen, would you like us to table this until the next meeting?
Uh, yes.
Okay, that'll give you some time to think about it and maybe be in contact with Lisa relative to what the county responded. Okay?
That sounds good.
Do you need a motion for that, Joe?
I was going to ask counsel, I don't think so, if petitioner is asking that it be tabled.
Right.
Jamie?
We don't need a motion, we can just table it at the chairman's behest and at the request of the applicant.
Then we're going to table this application until we hear from the applicants again.
One more question for you, though. We're going to submit the signs, when would you like us to submit the signs? You know, it's going to wait, well, forget about that because the sign goes above the window, so the ice cream window, so we're going to table that too.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, I'm sorry for the delay, but thank you for your application.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Folks, we did have one other item on the agenda that we have removed from the agenda. And I kind of just wanted to mention what that was and why. It's the application for the property on North Burdick Street, 5538 North Burdick Street, medical type office. The town board has not made a determination as of yet as to whether they're going to authorize the zone change. And although the applicant wanted us to give a site plan approval, it's premature if we don't know that whether the town board is going to go give the zone change or not. So I've asked them that to be removed from our agenda until we hear from the town board definitively. Okay?
Thanks, Joe, that's the right decision.
Okay, thank you, Richard. My next item on the agenda is an application by Andrew Day. This is a company called Taft Solar LLC. And it's with respect to the property located at 6966 Taft Road, East Syracuse. It's the initial presentation for a site plan approval on a solar array. And we have already been provided with a determination by the town board approving the zone change. So at this point, it's simply an application for site plan approval. Is there somebody here on behalf of the applicant?
I believe it was the special permit, Joe, at town board.
Correct, correct, Jamie. Correct.
Yes, 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 they granted the special permit, so it's on solely for site plan right now.
Correct. Good evening, my name is Drazen Gasek, I believe my, I'm on and my video is on. I'm with Labelle Associates, I'm the civil renewable manager at Labelle Associates. With me today, I have Andrew Day with Source Renewables and Don Hoffler from Labelle Associates as well. We're here to present for you a site plan for a solar array Resource Renewables LLC, who is developing plans for the installation of a 4.35 megawatt solar array to be installed on a bacon grassland located at 6966 Taft Road, East Syracuse, New York. Tax parcel would be 34.00-1-20.1 on lands of now formerly Greater Family Trust in the town of Manlius. The subject property is a 37.7 acre parcel, currently zoned restricted agricultural with technical development overlay. The parcel is located on the south side of Taft Road, just east of the Duitt Town Line. The proposed community solar system for the property includes the installation of approximately 11,000 modules, utilizing a single-axis tracker system, standing approximately 9.7 feet in height and 6.6 feet in width. The tables will be spaced at 7.4 feet intervals with anticipated screw piles as simple foundations. The proposed access road will consist of a GeoWeb system with clean stone fill, which is HS20 loaded rated. With the implemented spacing and GeoWeb road section, we are in conformance with the New York, with recent New York State DEC guidelines on solar panels, and therefore the panels and the road are not considered impervious and would not need to be treated as part of the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. The maximum depth of ground disturbance will not exceed four feet. And the helix screws or H piles of the solar tables will be installed at a depth of approximately eight to 10 feet, depending on location. The array will be surrounded by a six-foot-high chain link fence for security purposes. The new landscaping will be installed to screen the project site. There will be minimal vegetation removal, grading, and ground disturbance from the solar module panels installation. The anticipated maximum extent of permanent ground disturbance will be less than one acre. We are proposing to install five culverts crossing as to not inhibit existing site drainage. And this effort is being coordinated with the US Army Corps as well. The layout conforms to the underlying required setback for agricultural residential district, which represents a 50-foot front setback, side setback, and rear setback. We're also proposing to install one equipment pad with inverters and battery storage, which will be NYSERDA compliant. We are proposing that the arrays utilized for community solar purposes. The community solar program will allow local residences and businesses to share the benefits of solar power, even if they cannot or prefer not to install solar panels on their property by allowing them to purchase power from the array at a discounted rate compared to current electricity providers. So where we are currently with the project with regards to agency review, the wetland delineation was completed on the subject property by Labelle in July 2019. US Army Corps preliminary JD has been completed, the wetland areas were defined, and the proposed layout is mitigated disturbance. The early application before you that you had, which we have since updated and added to you as well, went from a fixed tilt southern-facing array to a tracker system due to the jurisdictional acquisition by the New York State DEC of the wetlands and them imposing 100-foot buffer within the wetland. So that kind of limited our initial layout that we had. We went back to the table and we redesigned the site by utilizing a tracker system in order to stay out of the 100-foot buffers from the wetland to preserve the wetland areas. The coordination with the New York State Historic Preservation Office and Federal Aviation Administration has been completed. Pilot agreement has been started with the IDA and will be discussed with the town and school districts. A special use permit was issued by the town board at the last meeting. The secret lead agency is determined to be the town board. The SWIP report will be provided prior to the next planning board meeting, same thing with the operation and maintenance plan and the decommissioning report. The purpose of our application to the planning board is to obtain the approval of site plan due to principal use being ground-mounted solar array. This project is a unique local opportunity to generate clean renewable energy for local residences and businesses in accordance with the New York State Initiative for Renewable Energy. On a local level, this project proposes a clean source of electrical access through community solar initiative for neighbors while contributing to a pilot agreement on a local level. Are there any questions regarding?
I've got, I've got, I've got a couple, Joe, if I could jump in.
Go right ahead, Richard.
I believe, and I get confused because I've seen so many plans. I thought there were some easements that were on the property that lied below your solar array. Am I correct or am I getting my projects mixed up?
The only easements that we have on this property are with the overhead electrical that is currently on site that is identified by these PE lines, but we are staying outside of those. There are none that are crossing the actual development footprint.
So the power line easement to the left, I mean, I say the left, it's my left. No, go a little bit further towards the site. The, yeah, that one right there. How wide is that and are you staying outside of that?
The easement is 200 feet wide and we are staying out of it.
Okay. The next question I have, and this is, this is something new to me, and I'm no expert at this, but I did a little research and we have another solar farm that's before us that we received some letters about yellow glare that's generated from these solar farms. And one of the things is, is that the FAA has requirements that you stay at least two miles away from runway approaches. How far is the airport from this site?
We submitted to the FAA the site with the property corners and we were cleared away from any impertinences to the FAA.
Okay, thank you, very good.
This is Joe Lupia again. How many of the 37 acres are you going to be building on?
The physical ground disturbance, the poles and everything that is proposed is going to be less than an acre. The the actual solar arrays, the project area itself is 17.28 acres. So our parcel area being 37.682 acres, we're utilizing only 17.28 acres.
Okay. Now, there's two areas of residences. One is over on Bastibal, which is actually over in the town of Duitt. Would you give a rough estimate as to how far away that is from your site?
If I was to look at this residence right here, basically Daniel and Brenda, the easement for this overhead utility is 200. I would want to say that they're probably, the edge of their property corner is 500 on this southern southeastern portion. And then I would say that probably to Mr. and Mrs. Stevenson's home, it would be probably 600, if not more. But I could get a measurement and provide it before the next meeting if that is requested.
Okay, we also have a few houses on Fremont Road to your east. And do you have a judgment as to approximately what the distance is from your site to those homes?
It looks like the closest one that I can see on this aerial would be Greg Winfield. Greg and, it looks like Patcock is the last name. It would seem to be almost equidistant in length as I just mentioned. So from the closest solar array, which would be the southeastern tip here, I would probably estimate 500 feet, if not more. But it is heavily screened with existing vegetative forested area between those two sites.
It's fair to say there's virtually no visual impact on the houses on Fremont Road?
Correct.
We also have a VFW post on East Taft Road. And am I correct that you are screening it by your planting trees?
Correct. We are proposing kind of first tree planting between the two. And if more is requested, we can provide it. But we are proposing two rows staggered to make sure that coverage or screening is provided.
What, what size trees are you putting in?
We typically plant a 10-foot tall tree. If that is something that, you know, is requested to be more mature or more established, we can consider it.
And these, these panels are movable, correct? They, they move with the sun?
Correct. The tracker system is moving with the sun.
And right now, as I look at this, I'm assuming up is north. So the panels, the face of the panels will probably be to the south, southeast, southwest?
The face of the panels will migrate from east to west.
Full east to full west?
Correct.
And that's done every day?
Correct.
I'm kind of curious on why the, the array then is north and south and not east and west? And I'm not an expert at this, I'm just curious.
So it is oriented north to south. The panels are going to be aligned north to south and they're going to be tilting or pivoting along that north to south axis with the panels following them east to west as they tilt on the north, north to south axis. So if the sun migrates from east to west, they will be tilting on the north to south axis following the sun.
Okay. And Doug, you got the SWIP?
No, I spoke with Drazen earlier this week and there were a few things that he was still working on.
Okay.
You know, he mentioned the FAA report.
We will be providing that prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, the SWIP, the decommissioning. There were, there were a list of things and we talked about him getting that in before the public hearing.
Okay, and I think that FAA report or approval or whatever it is would be nice to have in a file too.
Yep, we'll submit the letters.
Okay.
Doug, at this point, you've given a detailed list of the additional information you need?
Yes, I went over it with Drazen in some good detail. We had a good conversation. So I think he has a fairly good understanding of what we'll be looking for. And what we talked about was, you know, hopefully later this week or early next week, he would finalize all his information and get it over to me so that I'd be able to review it in time for our next meeting.
Okay. Do any other vet board members have questions? Have we declared ourselves the lead agency for this project?
The town board has declared itself the lead agency.
That's correct.
Have you had any complaints from any of the neighbors there?
I have not received any letters and I have not heard from anybody on this project.
Okay.
It seems to me the thing to do now then would be to adjourn this to a later date. And Doug would be the one that would tell us when it's ready to be put back on the calendar for further review.
I believe we need, we are going to need a public hearing.
Yes, the intention is, or the request would be that the next planning board meeting be the public hearing and we would be submitting the requested items that Doug and I discussed. But yeah, this week, if not Monday morning.
I would like to have those documents in hand, at least have Doug to have them in hand, until we schedule the public hearing or before we schedule a public hearing.
I would agree with Rich.
Yes, I think we need to do that. So at this point, I think that matter should be just simply adjourned and not scheduled for public hearing until after we have an opportunity to get the documents, review them, and know that we're satisfied and can intelligently speak in front of the public hearing.
I agree.
That's good.
Okay. Then we are adjourning the matter. And we await word from the town engineer as to when he's satisfied that we can put it right back on in front of us again.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an application by Phallic Renewables. This is the initial presentation for a recommendation for a special permit. That permit being for a solar array. And this is located up at 5062 North Eagle Village Road in Manlius. More particularly, tax map number 098-01-15. And again, this is only with respect to a recommendation for a special permit. Do we have somebody here on behalf of Falk Renewables?
Yes, hi, this is Jody Hunt.
And my name is Teddy Epstein. I'm the Business Development Director at Falk.
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
The floor is yours.
Is it all right if I share my screen? We have a brief presentation for the sites.
If we can do that, we would be delighted to.
Go right ahead. This is going to pop up. Are you seeing full screen?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's Green Lakes. That's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, so the way that we had the presentation set up was Green Lakes first and then North Eagle second. It's just the way that I had my, my presentation set up for the town board.
I'm not that smart, so you're trying to confuse me.
Oh. I'm easily confused as well. So I'm sure it's my fault that these are mixed up. There's two solar projects that we're going to be presenting this evening. One is the Green Lakes, which I, what you're seeing on the screen right now, and the other one is North Eagle. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to just go with Green Lakes first.
It's okay. It's a little bit complicated, but go forward.
Okay, sorry to be complicated. So I'm going to pass this over to Teddy Epstein to talk about the company briefly and then we'll talk about the project details.
Yes, thanks so much, Jody. First of all, thank you everyone for taking the time during this pandemic to have this meeting. Obviously very important to us. It's also important to the state's Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act in 2019 that was passed to try to get the state to 6,000 megawatts of solar by 2025 and 100% carbon-free electricity by 2040. So that's kind of setting the backdrop here for the project. Falk Renewables is developer, owner, operator of solar projects. In this case, community solar projects. In New York State, we have about 30 under development all over the state. And we're really happy to have two of them in the town of Manlius where we believe it's going to, unlike the last, not Taft Solar, but the last time the Green Lakes program project was presented to you. It was for remote net metering with the off-taker being Amizer Bush, which doesn't have anything to do unless you drink beer with Manlius. So this would be a community solar project that the town would be able to, folks from the town could sign up for to get a 10% discount on their electricity. You know, we have, we do have offices globally. This is just to show some of our, our, our global presence. We bring experience, not just from the United States, but from all over the world and especially Europe where solar, solar and, and all kinds of renewable projects have been happening for years. So thank you very much and I'll turn it back over to Jody unless anyone has any specific questions about the company.
Who owns Falk?
Yes.
Is it an American company?
Well, we're Americans. I work for Falk. Falk, Falk Renewables North America is an American LLC. The parent company is Falk Renewables SPA, which is a public company on the Italian Stock Exchange. Very recently, we actually had a joint, created a joint venture with, with a company called ENI, which is a gas and oil company. That doesn't mean that we're going to be doing anything having to do with gas and oil. It means that one of the largest petroleum companies in the world believes in the future of renewables. So it's pretty exciting, actually, if that answers your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it's an American company.
I have a question too, and this is, I don't fully understand it, but I'll do the best I can. I read an article a month or two ago and the title was "Lights Dim For New York Renewables." And it was about the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission coming out with a ruling that said what was being done in New York for renewable energy was not fair to the oil and gas producers of electricity. And it had to do with the buyer-side mitigation. And what the feds were saying is New York had to change the way that they were doing business with renewables to make it fair for oil and gas producers. So I guess my, my question is, how does that impact the economic viability of what you're trying to do, if at all?
Okay, great question. So I don't know exactly what that article was in reference to. There's a lot of things going on in the energy industry and the electricity market in the United States on the, mostly coming from the Federal, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. But as you know, New York State has New York ISO, New York Integrated System Operator, and they control the grid for New York State. And then throughout New York State, you have the, the joint utilities. So we're speaking about National Grid. At the moment, under the current rules and regulations, we would have a 25-year contract with National Grid to use the value of distributed energy resources. And that's a contract between the project entity that we're applying with and the utility, which is National Grid. So that's a 25-year contract with the utility. I don't think anyone is, or many people would say that the utility is going away anytime soon and we don't expect that. So we expect at least 25 years of cash flows until, using community solar, until we head to the merchant market. By then, we'll, we'll figure out the rules as they exist.
Yeah, this dealt with the capacity market. I don't fully understand it, but it was trying to level the playing field between the different utility companies. I'm just curious on how that plays into this.
Yeah. So that's the MOPR rule, M-O-P-R, Minimum Offer. I'm terrible with acronyms. I'm sorry. I can't remember what the last two stand for.
You're right. It's a minimal, it's a minimal cost, yeah.
Yeah, and basically what they were saying is if, if your states, if your state plays in, in capacity payments or you're, you're part of an ISO or RTO, that if you have state incentives, if you have state incentives, you can't, you can't apply into the capacity market. That's what it says. It's obviously going to go to court, right? People are going to tie that up in court for years. So under the current rules, we have no problem meeting our single-digit long-term infrastructure financial hurdles.
Okay, all right. I was just curious. I read that article. It was interesting and I'm glad you cleared that up for me. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks for asking.
Okay, if there are any other general questions, I want to talk about our site selection process. Again, my name is Jody Hunt and I'm with Tanger Tech. Working with Falk Renewables to do the environmental impact analysis, so to speak, and the civil design for, for site plan approval, special use permit permitting through Manlius. The site selection process is really three steps. First, we, things that you're seeing listed here on this slide. So local ordinances, how visual the project is going to be, things like glare and getting FAA concurrent with the project, and environmental constraints. Typically, solar developers and Falk in particular likes to, they like to feed environmental constraints such as wetlands, threatened endangered species, flood plains, and archeological resources, just to mention a few. The second step in our site selection process is to do a site suitability assessment, which would include mapping environmental constraints, zoning constraints, topographic constraints. Sites that are too hilly or too sloped or that have wetlands right in the middle of where a developer may want to put an array are not ideal. That site suitability assessment and the step, the second step in the process involves consultation with state and federal agencies and glare analysis. And then the final step really analyzes pros and cons of putting solar panels. Once we've selected or Falk has selected a property, where are the best places to put the panels on that property? Are there, you know, least productive areas if it's an agricultural property and for the landowner reverse? What's going on here? Okay, I've got two different screens showing two different things. It's strange. So this proposed project is Green Lakes. And again, I apologize for going backwards on you. This is the 8507 Green Lakes Road project. Total property acreage is 147.43 acres. The proposed solar facility would only take up about 23.4 acres of that site. It's zoned residential agricultural. And again, like Teddy mentioned, this would be for a community solar farm. There is an existing special use permit for part of this property. So if it looks familiar, it's because you've seen this sort of before. That permit, I don't think would apply here. But I bring it up just to say that a secret negative declaration was issued for at least the northern portion of this site back in 2017 when it was for distributed generation. This is the proposed Green Lakes Road site plan. It's a basic layout with an access road that, again, these, these panels would be fixed tilt. So you'll see that these are oriented east-west. Conversely, to what Drazen presented, where his were north-south. These are not trackers. These are stationary panels so that the rows go east-west and the panels stay where they are. There's a gravel access road and a small equipment pad. This site and the next site that we're presenting as well do not use a central inverter. So instead, we're using string inverters. I have pictures of those that I can show later on in this slideshow. But essentially, what a string inverter is, is it's an inverter that is attached up to the back of the solar panel. It's about the size of a large shoebox. And they're spaced periodically along the backs of the solar panels themselves. They don't take up any space on the ground. And it reduces the amount of cement pad that we need for our equipment. Again, the panels are typically three and a half feet by six and a half feet. The racking systems are pile-driven and these are fixed tilt, like I mentioned. The racking systems don't require any, any cement or concrete to hold them in place. String inverters are what we use to convert DC energy to AC energy and that would be loaded into the existing grid like Teddy mentioned. There's a security fence and a DOT compliant. and a DOT compliant gravel access road. Also submitted with our application was a preliminary SWIP. And I say preliminary because it's based on a 30% civil design at this point. Prior to construction, um, we would have the full SWIP in place with the NOI through the DEC. The, at this point, we've done our best to project calculations on the plan as it stands for one-year, 10-year, and 100-year rainfall events. Uh, one of the things that I like to say about solar projects is that if, if you're starting with a field that is typical row crop, and of course Chuck Hafner's field is not, it's Christmas trees, uh, and they're not harvested annually. Um, but solar projects, they don't cause erosion, they don't cause runoff. Um, they actually help to fix the soil in place. Because what developers do is they plant a year-round perennial grass or crop. It just, it, it's there all the time. It's not harvested. It's, it's maintained permanently throughout the lifespan of the project, which helps, um, rain infiltration into the soil and prevents the type of soil erosion that you're seeing in the picture here on the left.
What do you mean maintained?
Mowing, trimming, that sort of thing.
Okay.
The goal is to keep a low-maintenance, local variety plant in, on, on the site that will stay lower than the leading edge of the panel. We don't want it to be shaded by tall grasses.
Now, each panel has two, uh, two, uh, pads, do they?
Do you mean two pan, two levels? Um, the, the picture that you're looking at, yes, has two, um, panels, one on top, one on bottom. They are not all configured this way. And Teddy, I guess, can speak more to exactly which sort of equipment they're going to use.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Sure. So, uh, right now, we're, we're planning on using, so, uh, just like a picture on your wall, we call these, uh, in portrait or landscape. So, the picture you're looking at are two in portrait. Um, they could go four in landscape, so they would just be stacked the other way, and there'd be four panels stacked. Right now, uh, as far as the, the market goes and the spec we have, um, and again, things could change in the future, um, we are planning on doing two in portrait, just like this picture's showing.
Now, does each one have a, a three and a half by six-foot pad?
When, what, what do you mean by pad? And I'm, I'm so sorry. I don't understand.
Wait, you're, well, she was saying that they put in cement pads.
Oh, so the only place we would put cement pads in, um, is for the transformers, which I think we can show you now or later.
Yeah. So, um, are you seeing the site plan slide here?
Yeah.
There's a, at the end of the access road, up in the center of the project, is a little cement, or it's a concrete, um, equipment pad. And then there's another, or a little bit further south, where there's a pull-off, a little T in the access road. That's, that's really the only, the only concrete that will be placed on-site.
Okay. So I was just wondering, when you vacate the property, if you, if you dig up all that concrete, if you're gonna put them on all of those, uh?
Yeah. So, part of, part of our application as well, and I, you know, the requirements of the town is that we have a full decommissioning plan. And that is something, that's standard pretty much across New York State. Uh, all municipalities require it, that a decommissioning plan be in place.
Okay.
And it, it does involve the full removal. Everything that's there would be taken out, recycled, disposed of, and the property would be returned back to whatever is in, um, the lease between the landowner and the developer.
Okay.
Jody, if I can interrupt, but wanted to ask a couple of questions. Joe Lupia?
Yeah. Hi.
Jody, we approved, uh, the Town of Manlyas approved a special permit three years ago. Is, is it fair to say that this premises is pretty much the same, but maybe expanded by about a third?
Yeah. Let me go back to this picture here. The area in pink is what had the special use permit before. The area outlined in red is the new, what, what Falk is, is asking for. So it is a little bit bigger. Um, I would like to say, though, that the section that Falk is, the project now, um, does not have any additional visibility issues or glare issues. That section that veers off to the southeast is further away from the roads and further away from residences than the part that was previously approved under another developer.
Okay. And when we approved it before, there was a berm on the east side of the Green Lake Road that almost made it totally invisible to the houses, um, across the way. Is that still gonna be there?
Yeah, yeah. Falk isn't planning any, any grading or removal of, of any of that. That'll stay.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Jody, you mentioned something, oh, just a short time ago, about the landowner and the renter. Are you actually purchasing this property, or are you renting the property? Or Falk, whoever's doing the construction or development and ownership of the project?
Well, renewables, and I'm gonna let Teddy take this one, but, um, Chuck Hafner, um, would, would be leasing to Falk Renewables. Correct, Teddy?
That is correct.
Okay. And is that the same with the other project that we're gonna talk about a little bit later?
Uh, yes, we have a, we have a lease, we, we will, we have the option to lease the property right now. And when we get all of our permits in place, uh, and are ready to, you know, ready for construction and ready to commercially operate, we'll execute a lease agreement with, uh, Paul Shapiro and JRT Properties, which is Chuck Hafner's, uh, LLC.
And, and this, this is probably none of my business, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Since the landowner, I think, and Joe, you know better than I do, but the landowner ultimately would be responsible for returning the property to its existing condition at the end of the lease, is there something in these two leases that require you, or that puts security up with the landowner for you to return it?
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna have to do that with us, meaning the town. But I'm just curious what the lease, or how the lease addresses it.
Sure. Uh, the lease just has language that we need to remove it. Uh, there's no security that needs to be put up, um, in our lease agreement. So, uh, obviously, we expected that with the town. So, we're happy to, uh, you know, uh, oblige, um, and, and we'll follow the, the ordinance and the word of the town. Um, but there's not anything in the lease that is a security per se.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, having been through this similar permitting process before with the Town of Manlyas, kind of site, is something that is really, really important here. Uh, we did both analyses here. What you're looking at is a bare earth viewshed analysis in the image. And that's exactly what it sounds like. It, it takes a look at what one would see from various locations if the earth were completely bare and flat. Um, so it doesn't take into account trees, or topography, or, um, existing buildings, anything that might be in one's way. It is just a bare earth perspective. So then we take that another step, and we do a line of site analysis that actually takes into account the topography from our survey, trees that are there. It, it's more of a field effort. So we have people go out and take pictures from different viewpoints and actually model those, so that we can more accurately say what this project might look like and what, what the line of site might be from different, different perspectives. So those are analyses that we've done. Um, all of that documentation was submitted with our application. It's, it's lengthy. So please feel free, if you have questions, uh, to, to ask, either online or offline. There's a lot of data there. And then, again, the glare analysis and FAA screening. This project, as well as the other project, both have clearance through the FAA, that there be any, any effect on runways or flight paths or anything. We do a glare analysis that takes into account the solar panels themselves. And it's, it's a specific, it's a program that allows us to use specific information to the project. So we can input what kinds of panels are being used, how tall they're going to be. Um, and, and then pinpoint, as you can see in this image, different locations around the array, and what the potential for glare may be at all points of the day, 365 days a year. Um, this is another analysis that does not take into account existing screening or topography. Um, so again, this is a fairly conservative bare-earth model. Um, and even having said that, the only glare that we found at this site was minimal, and that was at OP2, which is one of those red markers. Um, it's residence, um, across the street. That, that yellow, or, I'm sorry, it's a green glare, green minimal glare potential for 20 minutes a day in the early morning in the spring. So between, I, I forget the date. It's between 5:30 and 7:30, I believe. And again, green glare would be what you might see reflecting off of somebody's house windows.
And, and that was one of the concerns the neighbors had across the street.
Sure. Yeah. It's a, it's a valid concern. And we address it all the time with these solar panels. But the point of a solar panel, if you think about it, is not to reflect. It's to absorb, it's to absorb light. The more energy that is reflected back off the panel, that's not good. That, we want panels to absorb light, to create energy from it, not to be shooting it back out. There. So, um, again, there's anti-reflective coatings on these things. They are meant to absorb, not to redistribute light. I just, for comparison's sake, wanna show a couple of Falk's existing solar projects. Um, this is a five-megawatt solar facility, which is the same size as what Falk is proposing here. Very similar equipment. The, the panel layout is a little bit different here. There's, it, it looks like they're more in landscape or versus portfolio. But this is about what the project would look like, give or take. Again, just, I wanted to show you some pictures of another solar project and what it looks like. This one is much more symmetrical. But again, it's a simple installation. This is about the same size as the one that we're proposing. And it's a simple gravel access road with string inverters. So these are the string inverters that I mentioned before. They're about the size of a shoebox. And rather than having a main central inverter on a, a larger equipment pad, these go right up on the back of the panels, and it eliminates the need for the larger equipment pad. Is that more clear now that you can see the pictures of them?
Yeah.
Okay. And then quickly, um, I think we all know that there are, there are a lot of benefits to solar. Um, one of the things that I think is the most important, especially in agricultural properties, is that really this is a form of agricultural land baking. It preserves the property while providing stable income for the landowner for the next 25 to 30 years, or whatever the length of the lease might be. Um, you know, it doesn't, doesn't harm the property. And in fact, a lot of times, having it sit fallow is good for the property. Uh, pesticides, herbicides, those things aren't used. So it's a very chemical-free, earth-friendly thing to do for an agricultural property. Um, we've talked about soil erosion, sedimentation control. They're quiet. They, they really produce almost no noise once you're at the fence line. And really, with string inverters, you get almost no noise. Um, and traffic impacts are low. You get, during construction, you know, a few, the, the traffic will increase a little bit. But after that short construction, you have to be a pickup truck maintenance vehicle three to four times a year, or as needed for, you know, snow removal or mowing. It, it just, it's weather-dependent.
How long, uh, I just have a quick question. How long from start to finish does the project take?
To build typically, uh, four months, give or take. And that's all I've got for Green Lakes, unless Teddy wants to add something, or there are any questions.
No, I think that's pretty clear.
Okay.
I had one additional question. Uh, it seemed to me, three years ago, we talked about the fence, and I believe it was a six-foot fence. Is it still gonna be six-foot?
We actually have a seven-foot fence here, and I believe that's industry standard.
Yeah, it's per, it's per NEC code. We have to have a seven-foot fence if we have 1,500 volts. Um, so that's what we're gonna be installing per code.
That's right.
Okay. And is that barbed wire across the top?
That is at the board's discretion. We do not currently have barbed wire proposed. Um, that we did, that didn't go over well the last time, I will say. So we left it off this plan.
Okay. Now, you've covered Green Lake Road. Are you gonna cover the other road? North Eagle?
Yes. When, if you give me the go-ahead, I can go right into that site as well. It's a much shorter presentation, because it's just the basics.
I'd like to go into that, so that we can make a determination on that first.
Okay. Great. So here we go. North Eagle Solar Farm is located at 5062 North Eagle Village Road. Total property size is 44.71 acres, and the proposed solar facility is 21.3 acres. It's zoned restricted agricultural, and would also be for community solar purposes. The site layout, again, it meets Town Solar Code requirements. It's located approximately 100 feet from North Eagle Village Road and Townsend Road. And it has a, a pretty thick amount of existing vegetative screening.
And that's, and that, and that screening will not be taken down, correct?
No. There is no intent to clear that screening. And, and right, I, I'm not sure who just said, except for across the front. There is not, there is not screening existing.
No. And the screening, um, is seasonal?
It's partially seasonal. So when, so, yes, it is, it loses its leaves. And, but it is viney and stringy. Um, I was up there this winter. I, I'm actually local to the area. So I was up there this winter taking pictures. And, yeah, it's not, not clear cut in the winter, but it still does have a good amount of screening. And if that needed to be, um, supplemented, it wouldn't take that much to supplement that for the winter months.
If, Joe, if I could jump in here, because we have gotten some letters on this one. And looking at the property, even though it does have that, that stream that does delineate a little bit of the property, I, it would be helpful for me, as we look at this one, to get some corners placed, whether it's like a PVC pipe put in the ground of, if you look where the roadway is on the west side, where it starts to be kind of an even line from the south to the north, if we could have those two corners marked, the corner to the east, the corner, the, the, the area where it sticks out the most on the east, and then down below near the stream, just so that it would be, it would be good to take a walk out there and look at this, to get an idea of how far those homes are from this, this array, to get a better feel for what they're gonna be looking at.
I can run out there and, and make some general measurements, as long as you're not wanting something surveyed. I mean, I can, I can go out there with a wheel and measure.
It's just, we have got, we have gotten some letters of people's concerns that they're gonna have to look at this thing. And I just like to know, I'd like to be able to stand on the property, look at the homes, and see what they're gonna be looking at, and get a better feel. It's just tough. I've, I drove up there, tried to, you know, I went over the church next door, and I went up Townsend. It's just tough to understand exactly where this farm, the solar array, is it gonna be on a property.
Does it go beyond the church, uh, how does it line up with the church?
The church is to the west of it.
Yeah, I mean.
Church parking lot kinda lines up with the property line, there's a, a row of trees in between.
If I have an aerial on here, maybe this will help, um, this is an aerial, this is what we use for our glare analysis and FAA screening, we also did do the line of sight here, and bare earth view shed analysis.
Yeah, two is the church.
Yeah, two is the church, yep.
Three is Paul Shapiro's barn.
Goes right up to the road, that's too close to the, that's too close to North Eagle Village Road. Why don't you, why don't you put it back more?
Well, we are within, I mean, we are within the zoning requirements for this property, and I think we're, we're actually further back than is required by the code.
And what is that, a 50-foot setback in the front?
Oh dear, yes.
I think it's too close, too close to the road. That's too close to the road for me.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I'm asking for some type of markers, just so I can get a better feel for where this thing's gonna sit on the property.
Okay, um, we can mark it, I, I can set some wood stakes out there with just some flagging for you, so that you can see it better.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda what I need.
Okay. Alright, we can get that done this week.
The ones on the side, delineate the whole thing out, so we can see how far back it goes, too.
Yeah, that's, that's what I mean, and if they could put two markers in the north part, where, you know, in the back, where the, the panels will stop.
Yeah.
And then one to the east, where it sticks out the furthest.
Yep.
And then a couple on the south side, where it begins to expand, widen.
Right.
No problem.
Thank you, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
It, it can be hard to visualize what this will look like when you're standing across the road, and, and even with stakes, I mean, I hate to tell you, even looking at a, at a couple of wooden stakes, it will help, but the perspective is still different.
No, I understand, it's, it's just that the other projects that we've looked at have very few homes, and we haven't had any complaints, this one is a problem for some of the homeowners, and be better if we had a better feel of exactly where this thing's gonna sit on the property.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Joe, have they received, have they received the complaints from the, the homeowners?
I'm aware of one.
I think we had three letters, Joe, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think there was three too, but, but what I'm asking is, is does this company have copies of these letters, so they're at least aware of what the homeowners are saying?
I do not, Teddy, do you?
I was never provided with.
I thought I forwarded them last week, I can resend them tomorrow morning. And we currently have what, just so you know, we currently, Allison received a Facebook comment, if she wants to chime in and let us know what it says.
Uh, yes, uh, it, uh, is from Leah Young, and she just said that, um, come stand in our home and on our property, we can see the entire farm in any season, all the way to the church and beyond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I, I don't wanna belabor this, but again, we did do the view shed analysis here, and this is the bare earth analysis and the line of sight, so using existing, um, topography data, existing landscaping, and I will note here that our line of sight analysis was done in the early, early spring, late winter, so it was before leaf on, um, so our line of sight analysis does have data in it that the town has, that shows accurately what this looks like with leaf-off condition, with, with bare trees. And that is all for this site.
How deep do you go with the, um, how, how deep do you have to go onto the ground with the post?
So, so before construction, or before the final civil design, many Falk would do a geotechnical analysis to determine exactly the depth, but usually between six and 10 feet.
Oh wow, okay.
And they're driven, again, no concrete, no cement, they're just, they're either screwed in or driven.
Uh huh.
And, Jody, on these two properties, there's no deed restrictions or easements that would interfere with your construction?
No, sir, that's one of the things that we check out right away with a, a survey, to make sure that there's nothing that's going to interfere.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from board?
Well, what do you do, what do you do if there's a lot of rock?
If there's a lot of rock, well, so, so one of the things that we do right up front is we, we look at bedrock in the area, um, and we do some desktop analyses and data that is readily available, um, from the Geological Society of America, that's not to say that it's perfect, but it gives us a good idea right up front, if bedrock is at two feet, then we know that this might be a tough site to drill into, um, if, if bedrock is typically at eight to 10 feet, then we know we're pretty good, so then we do the technical investigation, where they actually, um, they, they go out there with, um, sort of X-ray machines, GPS units, and figure out where the bedrock is, and punch a couple of little test holes, and then we know for sure what we're dealing with as far as rock.
I would get a good drill for this project.
Yeah, there's rock here, there's definitely rock here at the surface.
I'm building a project in Watertown, where the bedrock sticks up out of the ground, um, and yep, it can be done, it is, it is tougher, for sure.
The one thing, um, I, I would like to add about the proximity to North Eagle Village Road, besides the, I mean, and, uh, the fact is, is that we're inside of the, the town code, um, of the project, there, there are no houses directly on the other side of North Eagle Village Road, so the only way this would be visible, and there's no sidewalk, so the only way this would be visible is to people driving by, um, when there's no vegetative screening, so I, I did wanna, uh, make that point.
That's a good point, Teddy, thank you.
Thank you.
Ann and I drive by it every day.
Yep, and you can see there.
Okay, uh, I'm getting consensus from the board that, uh, perhaps we need to postpone this until we can all go out and visually see the markers, at least on the North Eagle Village.
Oh yeah.
Project.
Absolutely.
That would be my instinct, yes, Joe.
I agree.
The question for the board is, do we proceed on the basis of the Green Lake one, or do we hold off on both of them until we can make a visual observation on North Eagle Village?
Well, I'd like Doug to make sure he's got all the information he needs and documents, um, and take a look at this one in particular, Green Lakes isn't, I guess, as controversial as this one may be, so.
Correct.
They may be able to go on different paths, but, you know, this one probably is more like the Taft Road.
Doug, how much more information do you need on each of these projects?
Yeah, I've taken a cursory look at what Jody has sent in, I, it, it looks like it's pretty detailed, uh, I, I have not gone through it, uh, with a fine-tooth comb, but, uh, Rich, I, you know, I, you know, the next, you know, week or so, I can go through this in, in more detail, uh, we've been through this before with Jody, so I'm sure, you know, there, there's a significant amount of information that's in there, there may be a couple of things that we need, but I would think that, you know, there's enough information to at least, uh, you know, coordinate a review with her. If you look at that memo I sent you folks, right, I mean.
Yeah, no, I saw it.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I can, I can do that in the next couple of weeks, and I can coordinate with Jody, too.
Should we be putting this on the calendar on the next available date, or do we need a little bit additional time beyond that?
I think we need more time, at least North Eagle Village Road.
I guess.
Just a reminder of the procedure, we, we have to recommend on the special permit, then it goes to the town, right, then it goes to the town board, they act on the special permit or not, and it comes back to us for site plan review. Now, that procedure, by the way, is under review by the town board, will probably be changed, but right now, that's what it is.
Uh, Jamie, if I could ask, I thought there was at least one or two of these projects that were approved of the special permit at the last meeting.
I believe it was just that, um.
Just the Taft Road.
The Taft Road, yes.
Just Taft Road, okay.
So Jody, Jody presented, right, and Jody and I were both there, Teddy was there, uh, very similar presentation, and the town board referred it to the planning board, uh, for a recommendation, and that's where, that's where Jamie says, you know, we're trying to streamline this, because, you know, Jody's getting very good at this presentation.
Okay, so I guess, Joe, I guess I could change my opinion, I thought we were going forward with the site plan, I thought the special use permits were already approved, if not, we can probably move forward with the, uh, the, the guidance, or whatever you wanna call it, of the special use permit for these two projects, because they still have to come back for site plan, and so we've got plenty of time.
I'd like to do, I, I'd like to, if we can move forward with a recommendation to the board relative to the special permit, then we still have the opportunity to determine the site plan, and what we want, where we want, and, and if they're putting all the flags in, then we'll have a better understanding of that at a future date.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you now, I, I thought we were in a different place, so I'm good with that.
So in light of that, I would be willing to entertain a motion relative to a recommendation for special permit, uh, firstly with regard to North Eagle Village Road.
So moved.
Richard has moved.
I'll second. Second.
Mike Leroy seconds it, all in favor, and please tell me who you are.
Rich?
Mike?
Fred Gilbert, yes.
And Joe? And, uh, any opposed?
I wanted to wait longer on that one, I'm opposed right now.
Okay, uh, motion still carries.
Right.
So can you say exactly what the motion is to recommend for, that this special permit be granted, is that?
Richard, I think we all knew what you were thinking, but can you just put it on the record?
That was my motion, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've, uh, we've approved the recommendation for a special permit on North Eagle Village. Um, moving on to the next item on the agenda, Green Lake Road.
And for the public, just to understand that, then at the, at the town board level, they will be talking about what, if they will grant the special permit, and what some parameters might be, other than site plan, which is automatically a parameter.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and of course, there will be an opportunity for public hearing, uh, when it comes back in front of us for site plan approval.
Mr. Lubia, a gentleman in, an attendee has their hand raised, um, and as these were initial presentations, we don't have the Q and A function, uh, available for that, so what I'd like to recommend is that Mr. Shapiro, uh, if he has questions, contact the planning board clerk, Lisa Beeman, uh, you can call her, uh, in the planning and development office, or email her at LBeman, L B E E M A N, at townofmanlius.org.
Right.
Okay, so moving on, I would entertain a motion with respect to a recommendation for a special permit on the Green Lake Road project.
Is this a modification, or is this a new permit?
This would be a new permit.
New permit.
It's significantly different than, than what we did before, is what we had discussed
with Jody, and.
Okay, I'll make that motion, yeah.
We have a motion by Richard.
And I'll second.
Second by Michael Roy, all in favor, and please identify who you are.
Ann.
Rich.
Mike.
Fred Gilbert.
And Joe? Any opposed? Well, it's all five, um, motion passes, so we're gonna be letting the, uh, the town board know that we're making a rec, positive recommendation for a special permit on the Green, Green Lake Road property, and, uh, hopefully the applicant will get out there and put the flags up, so we can all go and look and see, uh, what, if any, impact there is.
Right.
I'll put my boots on and go do it tomorrow for you, if that helps.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you.
Lisa, can you let us know when it's done, then?
Sure can, Jody, if you'll just let me know tomorrow, and I'll, I'll let him know.
Sure, I'll send you pictures.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
We have no other, uh, agenda for our meeting, so Fred, did you wanna make a motion?
Will do, let's, let's adjourn.
Second.
Second by.
Let's not fight over it.
Fred, I have made the motion to adjourn for 10 years.
But I got your chair, you didn't know that, though.
Well, now, now Fred does it all the time.
All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Rich.
Aye.
Brad.
Ann.
Mike.
And Joe, motion carries, we stand adjourned until the next state, whatever that may be.
Alright, thanks everybody, good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.